A little bit later, thank you all for coming. So before we begin, we'll do what we normally do, and that's we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna go about how the meeting will go. Today's meeting has a singular purpose in terms of landscaping services presently being provided. The format for today will be that I will first start the meeting off with a couple of words and facts, then the president of Meticulus will speak. The president of Meticulus will speak, then he has an expert speaker to help us understand what's going on as well. And then we will have questions and answer in the front on the microphone. And all of this is being recorded because a lot of residents, you know, weren't able to attend. Okay, so they'll be able to view it. So a brief history. So last year, a similar meeting was held in the annex, which was too small, okay? And by residents, and then who was on the board at that point was also in attendance. We did not have the vendor there, okay? From that meeting, several recommendations came forward from the resident attendees. The board then met with our contractor and modifications to the landscaping program were done in an effort to make these services better. As an example, last year, we did not ever bag any grass clippings. It was only mulch. This year, we have added to the program that every other cut for ten cuts, we bagged the front lawns. I don't know if people realize that, but that was one of the recommendations that came from the previous meeting. And in addition, well, that also costs a little extra money, but be that as it may. In addition, cuttings now have been limited to Mondays through Fridays because there were concerns that we were cutting grass on the weekend, and residents felt that that was a burden. Periodic meetings were then held with our president ended to share residents' concerns as real time as possible. In an effort for full transparency, this year's follow-up meeting was designed with having residents able to hear firsthand information from our vendor's president as well as his expert guest speaker, so that you can make your concerns directly to them. I would like to share with you some facts in regard to the present services contracted with Meticulus. The number of cuts, which is twenty-seven, and the number of chemical applications that are being provided now are the exact same as the previous vendor who was turf mending. And the number was four. There was a definite cost savings attempting to go to mulching versus bagging with grass clippings as well. What we did also was from that meeting, the leaf pickups, a lot of our trees hold on to leaves into December, and we added a December cleanup because we didn't have that previous. Again, and all this came out from the meetings that we had, the meeting prior. Okay, so here's what I'm gonna tell you. Mistakes can be made, but things change. And if you don't keep current with what's going on... What do they say? Fool me once, shame on whatever it is. Okay, so we all look at our lawns as a stagnant thing. It didn't look like that five years ago, it didn't look like that two years ago. But lawns actually change. The stuff that grows in the lawns change. The weeds change. Now, if you do the same thing all the time and you're not getting the right result, that's the definition of insanity. I did it this way for twenty years, wow, things changed. So I'm gonna say this, in retrospect, I always second guess myself. The board does it all the time to themselves. Four applications. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just speak in the closing. So in retrospect and second guessing ourselves, four applications probably won't work ever again for all of you. So if you continue doing four applications, you're gonna get the same result. So the idea of today is to move forward. And what didn't work before, modify it so that it will work in the future. If you don't do that, that's insanity. So the board is getting ready to put together budgets for next year. So regardless of the company, doesn't matter, four applications may not work anymore. Now, each application has a cost to it. Whatever it is, it is. But if, you know, if it looks bad now and we wanna make it look better, we're gonna have to spend a little bit more money. So two extra applications may cost somewhere around, don't hold me to the exact number, twenty-four thousand dollars. Because look at how many homes you have. Right? But, you know, there's a balancing act here. There's a balancing act. But clearly, this year, you know, there was a lot more weeds than usual, and we're gonna hear why from some experts. But we're looking to modify the program for next year. We can't change the way it looks today now. You can't seed now and fix your lawns. You can't. You're gonna have to wait till September. And then some people have a misnomer. Seeding your lawn is the homeowner's responsibility and should be done periodically. I hear Tom said no. But I'm gonna tell you, if you don't seed your lawn, and I had residents come up, they said, "Why does your lawn look better than my lawn?" "How long have you lived here?" "Eight years." "How many times have you seeded?" "Seeded?" "I don't seed." I said, "Well, then your lawn's not gonna look like mine." And it's been, at least my experience and from what I hear from experts, you seed your lawn every second or third year, you need to do that. Grass has a life of its own, does. If you don't replace it, so you gotta do something. All right, so there's a lot to this, and it's not a simple equation. And for those who say, "Throw this company out, bring this company back," we've always had complaints about landscaping. I don't know, you know? And we always will have complaints about landscaping. But the idea here is not to say this versus that. It's to make it better and move forward. That's the goal. That's the goal for today. So again, we're going to add more applications of chemicals regardless of who the vendor is for next year because it appears between the drought last year and an influx of new weeds this year and last year, we need to do something different to make the lawns look better. Anything can be done with time and money. And in this case, it's money, okay? So here's the other balancing act that we have. And we're always not supposed to be concerned about every resident, but you gotta have a little part of you thinking about it. Raising the HOA fee for everyone, if it's needed, obviously. But for some people, they don't care what their lawn looks like. For some people, "I never do anything to my lawn, I don't expect it to look good." And that's not good either because it brings down the appearance of the development, right? So there's gotta be a balance. And for those people that say, "I can't afford to water," my heart goes out to them, but you gotta water a little. And sometimes watering a little gives you the same result. It doesn't look right. So there's many factors that go in. I've had residents tell me, "I may not be able to afford to live here anymore." And that's it. But gas goes up, electric goes up, food prices go up, car insurance, I just got mine, oh my God. Everything goes up. So the board is challenged with the balancing act, okay? How much can the HOA fee be for everyone? And how do you want the place to look? And how much money are we gonna spend? It's not easy. I, you know what, I'll step aside right now, someone wants to take this joke. I'm telling you, Adam. Because this is what it is, it's a terrible balancing act. And in retrospect, things could have been done better, absolutely. But we'll try to make it better on a go-forward basis. That's all we do. Anyway, with that, that's the end of what I'm gonna say. We're gonna hand it off to Bob Craft, who's president of Meticulus. And then we have Mr. Russo, who is, how do you say it?
Ergonomist?
Ergonomist.
Ergonomist. He's an expert on dirt and grass. Anyway, so let's get to the experts here. And then after they're done talking, we're gonna have that microphone. Like I said, it's being recorded, so other residents will probably have the same questions, you know, can hear answers, all right? All right.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Come on, that was loud.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming out today. As Mike said, this is a great opportunity for you to hear it from us and for us to hear it from you. We do this in all the other communities that we service. And, you know, while it may seem a little rough around the edges for some, most people walk out of here with a better understanding of what the contract is, what we do for you, and what your expectations should be versus maybe what it is. And hopefully, we can meet each other somewhere in the middle. A little bit about the company. We started in nineteen eighty-six. Next year will be my fortieth year. We truly are a mom-and-pop organization. I have my son, Robert, with me on hand. He was a Marine and a detective in Ocean County, prosecutor's office prior to this. He has the courage to try to get L-N and carry the company on. My wife, Linda, does a lot of the HR work and compliance work. My daughter, Ashley, is a CPA, she does a lot of budget and finance. We have our granddaughter who also works in it, doing some customer service issues. And we view it as a mom-and-pop type organization, but we are like fifty to sixty-man organization. And we service twelve communities, which equates to about sixty-five hundred homes a week. Our flagship community is Greenborough Ocean Air in Wayrington. It's fourteen-hundred-and-twenty-five homes. Many in the industry view that place as probably the best in Monmouth, Ocean County. It's a very beautiful community. So we do know how to grow grass. We do know how to service. I know that some of you may feel a little different, and that's okay because there's gonna be times where we can agree to disagree. And there's gonna be times where hopefully I can bridge the gap and get you on our side. That wasn't meant to be funny. Okay, so Mike laid it out pretty well. You have a basic, very basic number of services that you do. Your cost per home is probably twenty to twenty-five percent less than most communities. So you need to contemplate that. We, as he said, we do twenty-seven cuts. We do four applications. A couple weeks ago, Mark and I came on this property and walked for a couple hours, reviewed many lawns, ran into a few customers, had some interesting exchanges, took soil samples, we got an analysis of what your soils is. I don't wanna talk too much about that because that's Mark's end. At the end of the meeting, I'd be more than happy to hang around. If you have a specific issue with your property, I would have no problem taking your address down and coming out and reviewing it. If you have an issue with the way it's being done, you know, this is supposed to be more of a global, community-wide effort. If you have a specific to your property issue, you know, I'd be happy to stand on the side and talk to you and take your name and address and go out and see if we can remedy what the problem is. And with all of that, I think at this time it'd be appropriate to turn it over to Mark.
Good morning, everybody. Yeah, like Bob said, we came out, did a site visit of your community, and he just wanted some independent, you know, take a look at it independently, give you some thoughts. So I always do, I always ask for the soil test results, that's the first thing I'll start, thank you. That'd be the first thing that I start with, take a look at that, and then we'll do a site visit. And then I'll ask him some specific questions about the site and the community. Very similar to what everybody else is, is what's your budget, basically? How many applications are you restricted to? What are the watering conditions here, obviously itself? So meaning that, you know, it's not the community taking care of it. Everybody individually is taking care of their water. That's a big, could be a problem, could be good, could be bad. And then we just look at all the other environmental things that are happening here, too. Last year, the biggest thing I wanna remind everybody is the drought that we had in two thousand twenty-four. And everybody's communities suffered. I don't care if the community was watering, they're regulated on how many gallons they can actually do, you know, put out. So they had to cut back, so everybody had problems. So if you didn't do any seeding last year, you're definitely gonna have more weeds this year. And that's the problem that we're having, not just this community, but any other community that's very similar with budgets and the way that they operate. So this is probably the third or fourth, this is the fourth town meeting I've been at now, and it's the same issues, okay? And crabgrass is probably your biggest concern because the grass is thin. And since it's thin, it has no competition, so the crabgrass can take over. And that's what you're seeing a lot of right now, especially on the edges, things like that. This is also an older community, meaning that you have larger trees that are growing now. So ten years ago, there were small trees, turf-type tall fescue. I don't wanna get too technical, but different types of varieties of grass will grow better in shady areas, right? So those trees now that were little are big. Roots are exposed, topsoil needs to come in over those roots. New seed needs to be put in, which would be like a sunshade mix. Things like that is what has to happen in older communities. And if you're not doing that on a regular basis, then you're gonna see bare spots. And bare spots end up turning into weeds. So, you know, that's really the biggest problem that I see here is, you know, the weed population because of thin turf. So, Mark, how can we fix this? All right, well, we can, you know, put some more money into the budget and get some seeding going. Maybe, you know, topsoil in those bare areas under those trees, things like that. That helps, you know, for one. And again, not to get too technical, but looking at your soil tests, you also need, you have some fertility deficiencies that need to be fixed. So you need to add some fertilizers that have, maybe just not a general maintenance, but a specific purpose, okay? So those applications, obviously, are gonna cost a little bit more than just a general maintenance fertilizer. Once you have everything as a baseline, you have it proper, then you can go ahead and maintain. I think this community is on the spot where it needs to actually renovate. That's where you are right now. You're in a renovation point. So whether it be with fertility and also seed, but, you know, they kinda work together. So I would have to say do one or the other. And I think what I could brought it up that, you know, like other communities do, too, is, you know, maybe you put a budget in for a third of the community gets done. And then next year after that, the other third gets done. And then you can keep your HOA fees at a minimum, but you're still keeping up the presence, the aesthetics of the property, too. You know, keeping up your property values and what that, wanting more people to come into the community. But yeah, that's kinda where I'm at with it and what I seen out there. So, I mean, I can answer very specific questions if you have any. I don't have a problem with that. I just wanted to kinda give you a general overview of what, you know, I seen independently and what, I did write recommendations up for the board and for Bob. Again, it comes down to dollars and cents, really. Right, that's what it really comes down to, what you wanna put out, so. So yeah, we have a zero-foss law in New Jersey. Bob asked to, like you know about this. So, but, so a lot of the fertilizers, general maintenance fertilizers are zero analysis. So, meaning that you can't put down phosphorus, so we have to have a zero-foss in there. This community, though, needs phosphorus. This community needs potassium. So that's that application I was saying. It's just not a general maintenance. It's basically a starter fertilizer. You need to kickstart the turf that's here now. Bob has to follow the law, which says unless there's a soil test that says to put down fertilizer, he can't put it down. You do have soil tests that says you need that particular property, he can put it down. It's probably not in the budget that he agreed to, but I'm just saying, like, that's the kinda thing you have to keep in consideration when you have a contractor in here. He has to follow laws, but then there's a point where it's like, we can do more now because you do have these deficiencies. So he can do that for you on a supplement application. Well, again, there's other things we can do. Your organic matter in this soil is very low. These are some specific things, I don't know if you wanted to get into them, but there is, your organic levels are very low here. The mowing and leaving the clippings will definitely help. But you might, again, you might wanna do an application where you add more beneficial bacteria and humic acids to the soil. And what that will do is every time Bob puts another application of fertilizer down, those little beneficial bacterias chew up the fertilizer, give it to the roots of the plant, makes the plant grow healthier. When you have low organic matter in the soil, it doesn't have that ability to utilize the fertilizer he is putting down sometimes, okay? So it's like this battle that's not gonna happen. It isn't gonna utilize the fertilizer going down properly. We did that in, was it Greenborough? It's Greenborough, we did that application. And it was tremendous the way that the reaction is when he puts down an application of fertilizer, how it actually reacts. So within seven to ten days, he's getting green turf bouncing back, thicker lush turf, you know? So basically, what I'm saying is that your soil is dying as you just do the minimum applications here. All right, we need to feed, we need to feed the soil. It's just about putting fertilizer for plants, actually feeding the soil, which benefits the plant. That soil is the bloodline. You know, that, it's like when you go to a doctor, they're gonna do blood tests, they're gonna take urine analysis, whatever it may be, before he does any, you know, writing a prescription for anything. And that's what these soil tests are that we did right here. They're basically telling us what we need to do. And if you don't follow it, then you're gonna get minimal results at best. If you do follow the recommendations, you're gonna see better results out there on your grass, on your turf.
Yeah, so, follow up with that. Another community, Heritage Point in Larnigan, was suffering from poor drainage, poor watering practices, and very poor soil condition because they're a little further down and out into the pines. And so Mark came in, we did some soil analysis, and we put them on a humic acid program. And within two years, the place filled in, choked, the grass just took off, filled in, choked out all the weeds, and it's been really not an issue since. So it's so important to control the organic matter levels in the soil because it is the lifeline of the grass. It's the way the industry is turning now. And Rutgers is pushing us hard to try to get away from the synthetic, oil-based fertilizers and chemicals and get into a more holistic approach with organics and soil amendments. So when Christie was governor, he changed the fertilizer laws. And he put these tough mandates on us about when we can fertilize and how much we can fertilize. It wasn't for, not for good cause, it was for good cause. Because everything that's on this property has a leaching effect. It goes east, it gets in tributaries, it gets in storm sewers, and it gets to the bed. And what happens in the bed? It kills crabs, it kills oysters, it kills scallops. And whether you realize it or wanna realize it or not, Barnigan Bay is the lifeline of the financial structure of Ocean County. It's tourism. Without that, you know, this area could be in big trouble. Plus, we have all a, you know, we wanna leave it better than we found it. We have a humanistic endeavor here in trying to make our place better. And so if we can get away from the heavy chemicals and get more into our organic approach, it would certainly be a lot better. And I know a lot of this to be true because I have friends who are crabbers, lifetime crabbers at Bahamian Bay. They said since sanding, instead of the fertilizer laws, crab entrance is as good or better than it was in the sixties and seventies. So there is a profound effect. And we're cognizant of that. And we have to have, part of our training is we have to do sixteen hours every winter and continuing education credits through Rutgers for everyone who puts down anything, any type of fertilizer or any type of pesticide. So the guys are continually getting trained and updated on the new technologies and the new available products that are out there to use. So as Mike said, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing and expecting, you know, different results. That's almost where we're at here. We come to the conclusion that we need to do a much more aggressive approach to kill back what we have and then to encourage the residents to have their property aerated and seeded, fills in. And then going forward, we could do, you know, lighter applications, additional applications, and hopefully maintain it to a much higher standard than you currently have. So that's a lot from us, so I'd like to hear from you guys.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take this. Oh, boy, this sounds really loud. No, I, yeah, sorry. Hello, this is very loud. Okay. This is number one, I think. Hello, 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 hello. I think it's number one, looks like one. If not, I'll take a different one. Let me use Bob's, this is good. Okay. Okay, so there's really a couple of aspects. One is the labor, who's doing our cutting and how that's going. And the other one is the soil. So the soil has been depleted. And without doing the tests, you don't know. And then you have to do the test in order to get permission to put additional chemicals or phosphorus or whatever into the ground so the lawns thrive. So we've already done the first leg of this, and that is testing. And now it comes down to, Mike, this is your problem, boy, this is your problem. How much money do you have to invest to start making it better? Well, it's not unlimited, but clearly something has to be done. So if that means going over budget to remedy the situation, and then, because this year's budget's already done, that was done last September. So we didn't know last September that we're gonna need more money for this year. We didn't know that. But we do know now that the next year, we need to put more money in for additional applications. So we're gonna build that into the budget for next year because we have empirical data that says you're deficient. Now, we all understand, I mean, if you plant the same crop in the same plot of land every year, the crop's not gonna get better, right? It's either you gotta rotate it or put something into it, so, because you're depleting the soil. That's what happens, like anything else. So clearly, additional monies have to be allocated for next year. And possibly, an application for this year needs to be done because we're playing catch-up at this point. So I don't really, and I'm gonna say this with tongue-in-cheek, I don't think it matters who the person, the company is, if the soil's not up to par, right? So you can point a finger, and last year, people pointed fingers, and there was a drought. I mean, they just took the contract at the wrong time. I mean, you know, they're getting killed here. But the reality is, obviously, it can be better. And now we're gonna try to move towards that. So with that said, now it's your opportunity to pose questions. I'll either be answered by Meticulus or by myself from the board's perspective. And we'd like you to use the microphone in the front so everyone can hear you.
My name is Marty, I live on Fountain Lane. And I, when I first moved in here, I was very glad in one of the winters for the properties that I had a well. And I always thought more was better. So I not only knew you guys were servicing nine-hundred-and-twenty homes in here, but it was all, every house was getting the same, so I hired another contractor to deal with my property. So when you guys put out your portion of whatever you're doing line or whatever, my lawn would get a double dose because somebody else would show up and do the same thing. And I was thinking, more, more was better, so I'm willing to pay for it. So, but my lawn, you look at it, very disappointing to me. I'm thinking one of the issues is this one species of tree. I'm thinking one of the issues is this one species of tree. I got two of them on my property, and the surface roots are awful. So I think that that's probably where I'm having problems. I also noticed from the road, I'm getting a lot of weeds coming in from, from the road that, well, I had the aeration and all that stuff. And I'm thinking with this double dose of chemicals I'm getting, I'm treating, I'm doing more harm than good. So that, in that statement is a question. Am I ruining my lawn by having somebody else come in and do what you guys are doing as well?
Yeah, sometimes, you're, like you said, it's probably over application at that point. So if you have a broad, if we control that, maybe, you know, meticulous did.
I do have, when the most damage was done.
Sure, you got two herbicide applications at one time, it's not good. Okay? So that's it. Over fertilizing, you can have potential for burn too. So I would definitely be cautious of what that other applications are that you're getting done.
My goal was to have a lawn I'd be proud of. From when I moved here, I had a big house with a really nice lawn. And I try to duplicate the same thing here. And...
I would save the money and put it into your HOA fee and let the, let the experts take care of it for you. So they know what's going on, it's under control.
So to add to that, you could put up flags in the corners of your property and not have meticulous put anything down.
I knew that I was getting something more by allowing.
No, I get it, I get it. But there is an option that some residents have done. They prefer to go to the lawn doctor, Richard Green or whatever, and they put up flags so that you don't get the double dose. So that's another thing. Yeah, we normally do a name and address so that we know who's come to the thing. So you have a floor. What's your name?
Good morning, all. My name's Anton, and I live on Rock Hill Lane. And I'm a newbie, I've been here for just under two years. So I've always had nice lawns where I used to live. And I'm a hands-on person, okay? Even though I had a landscaper, I'm constantly working on my lawn, doing the in-between stuff. Mike, I understand everything you say, and that's, that's fine. The only issue I have is the maintenance, is the workmanship. I mean, it's very hard for me to do the seedings that I do periodically along with you guys and your fertilizer and the summer garden, all that stuff. But when I see them tear through so quickly with those heavy machines and do quick turns and tear up my grass even brush, it gets me a little upset, okay? And then they finish up with their weed whackers, and they go around my trees. And I've got almost dirt around the tree because they cut it so lower than weed whacker, lower than the grass that was cut. So I'm trying to be meticulous myself and do all these things. But it's like, I can't win because they're destroying my grass in these ways. And then when you do your applications of the weed killer, I mean, I called, I had a situ, we had a situation weeks ago where I come out and I see everybody's curb grass on my street has a brown line next to the curb. And part of Lennox, this brown strip next to the curb, okay? I called and I expressed my concerns. They got back to me that they, they got, they got ahold of you. And evidently, I guess it was just over application of weed killer. So everybody's on my street has, is growing out a brown strip that's a foot wide going down the street on each side and on Lennox. Okay? They did the weed application on lawns. Next thing I know, I mean, I watered the whole bed. I've got brown strips in my front lawn, in the back, in the front, and I can't control it. I asked the guy who did my mulch, I said, "What's wrong with my grass?" He said, "Oh, you got a fungus." I don't know. Okay, so I get anti-fungus, whatever it is, and I put down. It didn't matter because my lawn was just dying and dying. Now I got big, big patches of my lawn that are brown. Besides that, I've got carpets of weeds. You know, I tried, the weed killer didn't do a thing. So I said, "I give up. I basically gave up for this year, and I'll work toward next year." So that's my big concern, is that more of the maintenance than everything else. It's just, they don't seem to have the care or concern. They just got to get it done. And they're quick, they're fast, and digging up the lawn, everything.
Tell me your residence.
2926 Rock Hill Lane. And just last week, I was inside and they came through, and the guy's ripping across my front lawn. And I look, he got off the thing, and he's going around, putting all the dirt back or the grass back that he turned so quickly, just took it out of the ground. That's what I'm concerned about. Okay? Thank you.
So the name and address?
Ronnie Santone, 3295 Springer Lane. And first, I want to compliment, Robert came out to me in April when your guys inadvertently cut my bush to the ground and he replaced it. And at that same time, I showed him the grass on the side of my driveway that had marks of dead grass. And he said, "I'm gonna come back in a month and do it." That was April, it did not happen. I don't know why I put a too-concerned sheet that I lost my grass. Now my grass, there's really no grass on that side. As he said previously, we have brown spots all over our ground. We don't, they weren't there when we started in the spring. I put a new lawn in last year with Alejandro, seeded, aerated, did what you said. And I water three times a week. Maybe it's not enough watering, but that's what I was told Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And I watched these guys come. And when they're done, the grass isn't cut, it's pushed down. So I don't know if it's the blades that aren't sharp enough. I don't know if it's not cut low enough. I don't know. I'm not an expert like you are. And sometimes they edge, other times they edge part of my sidewalk. Don't do the driveway, don't do the front, don't do the back. So I don't know if there is a thing they're supposed to do that's a standard. Maybe that's the word. What makes it that one week they do it, one week they don't do it? And this year, I paid, I didn't have mulch before and everybody else did, so I paid for mulch. Now it's covered in clippings, but I can't get out of that mulch. And I don't understand what I'm supposed to do to get it out. I didn't put it there, so...
So I'm gonna say, everything you said was accurate.
But that's not helping me, Mike.
Let me finish, let me finish. So you asked, you know, they're not supposed to edge every time according to contract. And they're not supposed to edge your blacktop. So if you think that's supposed to happen, that's never been the case with any vendor here.
Okay.
Because they could damage the blacktop with the weed whacker, and then there'll be a bigger problem.
Okay.
So just some numbers. To cut everyone's grass, each home is $9.50 a cut.
Then, Mike, I wish they would cut it correctly.
Listen, Ronnie.
Okay.
My turn, okay? I agree, I said everything you said was right. I've seen people, they've asked me to come over, I'm agreeing with you. And in times when you're mulching, I hear people, a lot of people say this, and this truth to it, it appears the grass is just being pushed down. So you're right. I mean, you know, it does appear that way. I can't answer that as to why or whatnot. But they're not supposed to edge each time, they're supposed to edge. I forget what it is. I'm not gonna say every other, but is it every third or every fourth? I'm looking at the contract in front of me, and I'm not appreciating that. But lawn mowing is under $10. And when they edge, it's another $1.75 per house.
Okay.
So if you look at that, $10, $9.50 plus $1.75, that's $11.25 to cut, weed whack, and edge your lawn.
I have to ask you on that.
Every time. So normally, if you had your own house, it might be $50, let's just say. So we're doing, and I'm gonna call it a minimal service.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm gonna call it. So just for the numbers, that's what it comes out to. And when they do an application, it's like $14 a house. I don't know about you, I bought the even feeder, and it was $35 through Amazon. So you're getting it for 14. That doesn't mean it shouldn't be good. Let's be clear.
Yes.
That does not mean that. But clearly, when I said before, anything can be solved with time and money. Right? If we spent more money and did extra applications, that may not be the answer either because the other Jeff Anton said, "I put too much stuff and I probably burned myself." So again, I'm gonna go back to, the tests that were done show a deficiency. And we're gonna react to the deficiency. And hopefully, that's gonna turn the corner and make it better. Because we have to do something, right?
But Mike...
Now, getting back to the other thing you said, Ronnie. I have those grass clippings in my flower bed. Joe Gomez has told me he had them in his flower bed. You've said it, you've said it. Yeah, and we did bring that to their attention. And it's, we're gonna try to make that better. And I don't know why it's happening other than they're cutting in the wrong direction and should be kicking the clippings out to the grass as opposed to the flower bed. I mean, these are all things. But I'm gonna go back to something else. Due to, it's not an excuse, it's a fact. Due to having training more people and transient workers and not having the workforce is not helping us. Doesn't mean it's right or, it's not right. But the problem is, as you bring in new people and you train them, and then they leave, and you bring in new people and you train them, and they leave, and you bring in new people and you train them, now you're setting up a habitual problem. How do you solve that? I don't have the answer to that.
I understand that, Mike. And as Robert said, on our street, this mower should have just come right across to Eddie, to me, to Danny, not turn around on my side, they ripped up the grass.
But then we have people that say, "Don't go on my blacktop." I, you know, Ronnie, for every, I'm gonna say this. You can look at it this way, you can look at it that way. There's always gonna be something that someone doesn't like. Why aren't you turning on my blacktop? You wouldn't turn, you know, chew up my grass. Why are you turning on my blacktop? I just had that redone. And then they have to pay for redoing the blacktop, which they do upon occasion when a mistake is made.
Can you just slow down, Mike?
Yes.
Well, I don't know if you remember Turf Master, but we used to call him Speedy, okay? So I, for those who have lived here a few years, I'm not saying it's acceptable, but if you're getting $9 or $10 a house to cut the grass, you're not necessarily going as slow.
That's the pressure bit?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, so again, we could pay three times that amount, we could. And we could raise the HOA fee.
So you mean, then they'll get it?
I don't even know if they would go slower because, you know, if you go to a new company and they're charging more money and they say they have a reduction in workforce, and by the way, it's $50,000 more, and you know they got thrown out of the last place they did.
Yes.
And then you're gonna go with them, switch companies. So you're gonna pray that you're spending $50,000 more and getting better service. So it's not, this is not an easy or simple equation. And I know people have said, "Throw this company out." It's easy for anyone to say that. But at the end of the day, that person who said, "Throw them out," they're not held up here accountable, like the board is.
You're right. I, I'm not saying anything about you, Mike, or our board. I'm just asking, could our company, who is our company, do something for the workers that are doing our lawn?
So that I'll turn over to him.
You were doing good, Mike. Okay, so let me address a couple things. The height of the grass. People who water more frequently, the grass tends to grow faster. So in the summertime, we cut a three and a half. In the spring, in the fall, we can cut a three because we don't have the pressure of the heat and the sun. So the ones that grow higher, sometimes it does lay down. A big problem here is that there's probably anywhere from 20 to maybe 25% that people don't water, don't water. So what do you think happens to those lawn mowers when they go over that, you know, sandy, weedy, grassy, dusty?
Can I ask you how often the blades are sharpened?
Let me, let me finish. So the point is, you know, it's, it's, it affects the lawns. So you said you water three days a week. That's not enough, it's not enough. Especially in the summer, especially in the heat. Now, we were getting rain, which is good and is beneficial. But yeah, like the last two weeks, the minimum amount of rains, yeah, you probably need to water a little higher, a little more, more frequently. And this is a good thing to do too. I don't think people realize, it's called cycle soak. So say, as an example, if you water your front lawn, just say 20 minutes, random number, don't do 20 minutes at one cycle. Do it three 10-minute cycles. So if you do the first soak, and then it cycles all the way around, and then you get back to Program B, another 10-minute cycle. A swathe of water has time to sink into the ground, get absorbed, versus putting it all at once and losing a lot to runoff. So I don't know, your irrigation guy you can speak to about that. It's just a simple change in the program. They call it cycle soaking. As far as the speed of the mowers, you push the handles forward, it goes. Turf Masters mowers, Down to Earth mowers, LMS mowers, Art mowers, High Techs mowers, Cut Above mowers, they're all the same mowers. We all buy the same mowers. They go at the same speed. It's the thing that kills me is the idiot that rocks that thing, turns it around, and turfs tires to grass up.
I sent you my concerns, nobody ever came.
Well, sometime...
Robert came, but he didn't come back.
Yeah, okay. So that, that, oh.
So, it happened around Mother's Day, remember I promised you that hydrant?
Yes.
And I got it before Mother's Day.
I said, "He came right away."
So it started, we got a lot of rain in there. And I, I kind of lose, you lose the window when you can't see. So that left side of the driveway, that it's getting seeded. We're just not in that window right now.
Okay, if someone answered that, good.
Okay.
But you will get back to me eventually.
Yeah, the left side of the driveway.
Yes.
And it will be the correct scene, you won't be the one hell of a trip with the...
Yes. Thank you very much.
Very well.
Many glad you're at 2751 Meadow Lake. When I first got here 10 years ago, there was a weed on the lawn. I guess it's creeping charlie. I don't know what the real name is. Well, I got on my knees and I went with a, took a holt screwdriver that I pulled out the weed, the root and everything. And I did the entire lawn, and I didn't have anything until this year. It's all back again. And it's back with a vengeance. Now, I don't know if it's the weather or it takes that long to come back or if there's something else I can put down to stop it.
I'd have to take a look exactly what it is. That we're talking about, then I can give you, I got almost specifically, if you had a picture of it or something, I can see it, but I don't know, I just...
I pulled out most of it again, but along the front, I left, I didn't do that yet. It just takes time to pull it all out.
Take a look at it.
Yeah, is there something I can put down? Because I, I looked it up online. And the only thing they had was small bags that were $100 a bag that would kill this particular, and I don't know if it's gonna kill the rest of the grass. Because I don't want to put weed killer down and then I kill everything.
Let us take a ride by so we can at least identify.
All right, 2751 Meadow Lake.
Got you.
All right, thank you.
If you got, if you have questions, we can just make a line in the middle like we do in the open board meetings. Just take your name and your address.
My name is Jacqueline Darrell, I live at 2422 Torrington Drive. I've had to receive, well, actually put down some... I've had to receive, well, actually put down sod. My backyard had no soil, nothing. The roots were very high. I asked several times, there was a big problem. So I had to install, pay for it myself and I installed the three trees. Now, when they come by, and I agree with everyone else, they go past our, I now have divots in the lawn that I measured a four inches deep of sod that I paid for on my own to put down. They do not hedge or they do not do the edging correctly. And I can speak some Spanish, so I'll be able to speak to them. And they're just running through and doing everything. I now have a tree that's dead that I paid for, I bought myself. It's a Japanese maple tree. Well, I guess they didn't feel like going around it too much, so they cut some of the, and that tree was expensive. I would like you to stop by my property. I would love to show you exactly what's not being done. Okay, it's at twenty-four twenty-two Torrington Drive. All right, thank you. Oh, and by the way, all the, you say that you test everyone's grass?
Not everyone's.
Ah, can you test my grass? Or can I see the results? I'd like to see the results of what you have.
If you want to pay for it, you can.
Oh!
Well, we don't, come on, it's twenty dollars a sample, you have nine hundred and twenty-nine homes. It's fifty dollars a sample. It's nine hundred and twenty-nine homes.
That doesn't command the HOA fees. But, so you wanna do something to my soil and I have to pay to have it? I thought you just said that you tested people's soil and you had-
No, they, they tested the community in several areas. I think it unrealistic to say that we checked every common area in each of the nine hundred and twenty-six homes. That's not possible, that's just not dis-
Well, what were the results from the ones? Do you have, can we get a copy of the results?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
You've come to the office, I'm gonna make you a copy, it's not a problem.
Okay, and also all of the, and just so everybody knows, potassium is what you're talking about. The most organic way is to take banana peels and put them in water. The potassium from that is natural, it's organic and it does not kill any other animals and it does not kill the grass.
You just have to get a banana grow to test nine hundred and twenty-six homes.
I'm sure, don't be sworn out, it's not-
You, you, you know, I wanna, I wanna just say this. You had the floor, I'm gonna say this. We brought experts here and I do not know what they know. Anyone in this room who has their amount of knowledge, that's, that's wonderful. But as each individual homeowner, I, I don't know. Someone says like, "How often you cut the blade?" "Sharpen the blade." I mean, that's their job, so they do it. And they thought, and if you say, if somebody says it should be done every week and it should be done every third day, I mean, we don't know the answers to stuff like that.
I don't disagree.
Okay, so that's why we brought experts here.
And that's why I was asking them to stop by and also-
To individually think that your, your property as opposed to someone else's property is gonna be tested. There'll be pitchforks out here saying, "I want mine done, I want mine done." So we can pay fifty dollars times nine twenty-six, forty-five thousand dollars and we can raise the HOA fee, not a problem.
See, you know what, you make, see this is what the problem is. Is that you're gonna turn it around and put it on me, like, "Oh, she wants us to do this." I'll pay for my own then.
That's fine, that's fine.
And what I'd like to see in the future, when you show all the residents, all the numbers, how many people, you don't have a count for fines. That people have paid fines. I noticed that when you have a breakdown, want to have a count, the people who have paid fines, that you find, they've paid them. I think that, as, look, we should be able to see those fines, the amount and where does that go to?
And you are entitled to all of that information if you come to the office. You can ask for any finance, any resident can ask for any financial information at any point because it's an HOA and you're part of the HOA.
Yes, I'd like to say. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Hi, Steve Nager.
Hi, Alice Kow, Stanberry Lane. Uh, in the fall of twenty-twenty-four, we had extensive work done on our lawn because the people prior to us leaving there had none. They couldn't do anything anymore because they were ill. So we had a lot of work done by, uh, Cut Above. And they did a wonderful job in the spring of this year. The grass was great, everything looked wonderful, but uh, what happened was, I don't, I don't know what happened with Cut Above. Uh, not Cut Above, I'm sorry, Meticulus. Uh, regarding the blades, the waters cut, so I have some show and tell here if you wanna look at it. Uh, our front lawn looks terrible at the moment and so do our side roads. And the thing that is bugging me the most, we had brand-new drains put in from the spout that comes down leaders and your edging people just wrecked them all, all four of them. So what I'm looking for is a replacement on these leaders. That's what I'm looking for. So they're all chipped.
So the process is we fill out a concern sheet. It ends up being logged, goes to Meticulus and they come out to see it and then they make a determination about how to fix it. That's the process.
Well, there was a fellow that came by from Meticulus. Uh, I don't know his name. He had all kinds of like piercings in his, but anyway, I don't know.
Might have been Vinnie, but please fill out a concern sheet.
But he took pictures of every single leader that was chipped. So somewhere-
So, so the man that went to your house, is Vinnie who works for Meticulus, I sent him there to get measurements for those?
You could see it if you wish.
Yeah, I, I saw it, I sent him, I saw it, I sent him there to get measurements.
Because those, those particular things were cut flush with the uh, edging, you know, the grits that were there, the, the leaders themselves were cut flush with it. There was no reason for it to be chipped.
I, I completely agree and that's why I sent him there to get measurements. So we can replace them.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Name and, name and address, Sandy.
Short person here. Sandra Gomez, twenty-eight seventeen Greenwich Street. Um, I'm not going to repeat a lot of the um, issues that other people have said because I have probably all of them. The other one, I have an unresolved issue from last year, but I'm not gonna do that here either. I get, not just me, my neighbors, what, I'm, this is what I'm guessing happens, I don't know. When we're mowing these wet lawns and so on and so forth, all, you know, these clippings kinda stay underneath the mower and they have to drop somewhere. They, they like my house. I have huge areas of droppings on the property, like dead grass clippings. And um, I really can't go out there and clean it up along with all the other stuff, the clippings and the mulch and all that. Like I said, I have the same issues that everybody else. But that I don't think was addressed here today. So um, you know, I will speak with you after the meeting, so I'm not taking up this time.
But Sandy brought up a good point. And that is, I've had people come up to me, "Would you believe they cut and it was raining?" And then I had people come up to me, "The sun came out and they didn't cut." So I would like Bob to speak too. The ideal circumstance, I think, but I'm not a lawn expert, is that the grass would not be wet. Right? I would think, but I'll let him speak. I'm gonna tell you my other thing, or it's for me personally. If it's wet, it can clump.
Correct, and, and-
And then, and then what happens if it's a mulch time? And then it's not being picked up, so therefore there's big clumps of everything all over. I've seen it, I've heard it, and I agree with you.
And if it was bad, now I, I understand everything that was said here. Do I agree with the law? Not all of it, but I, I fully understand that what was, what was stated here today. But it, it, and I un, I understand everything you said about leaving the clippings and, and all that stuff. I know, I'm, I'm a science person. Not that I know everything, but I, I know more than some, less than others. But if it was bad, at least then what I am doing to try and maintain my lawn is, you know, I, I would, I would be capable of doing that. I have, where it's been dug up, and I did this twice this year, big, huge areas all over dug up from when, when I had drains put in, I've, I've done a lot. I've gone out there, I've raked it, I've bought topsoil, I put it down, I've seeded it, put the, the flax around, let it go five or six weeks until it's well-established, take it out, the very next mowing, back up again, I did it twice this year, so I'm not doing it again. You know, so it's, it's um, like I said, I'll speak with you after the meeting, but thank you for your time.
So, so something that I want to add is, and maybe it's in education, like I, I watered after they cut my lawn. Because if you watered before, there's more chance of what's happening like Sandy said. So that may not be common knowledge to people, but I think we've tried to say, it, and it's almost a routine, like I know Thursday afternoons, they're cutting this side of the car. Right? So I turn my sprinkler off, the grass is not wet, so there's less chance, not that it's not happening, it's still happening, but there's less chance of tearing up the lawn or getting the clumping and stuff. So right after they're done cutting, I water. And it seems to be doing a little bit better. Uh, not solving the whole problem, because I'm gonna say this and I'm gonna say, a friend of mine, Joe Gomez, had said this. Maybe mulching is not the answer for Lakewood. Maybe that's true. And maybe we need to do that, but let's evaluate all aspects of this to try to make it better. But now I'll go back and say, what does it cost to bag all the time? Forget the nutrients going in the ground while I do this stuff. And there's gonna be a number, and I keep going back to, anything can be solved with time and money. So maybe the next year, we can modify the contract to have two more feedings, as the expert said. And maybe we need to do more bagging so we don't get clumps, as Sandy said. And we'll come back and say, "That will cost X," and then figure out if we can afford to do all of that. Time and money, anything can be done. So again, the purpose of the meeting, and it's good to hear the stories so they can appreciate it, you're telling, you know, the people directly, maybe we need to add more money to the program. And then, fine, so be it. I don't know. But you know, clearly we need to do more. So I don't know, somebody else is getting, you getting credit for that? Were you getting, yeah?
Hello, my name is Franca Rubino. I live at twenty-five sixty-five Little Pine Court. I've been a resident of Tom's, of, of Lakewood for thirty years and never in the thirty years has my lawn looked so frumpy. I have a video of my property and my neighbor's property. And I would invite you to come and look at our, our great properties. If you can't do that, I will post this on Facebook and YouTube so you can see it and so the whole world can see it. It is deplorable. One picture is worth a thousand words. I thank the Michaela. I invite you to come and look at my property. I don't wanna be, take such drastic means, but please come and look for yourself and see how terrible this property and my neighbor's property looks. I believe that our houses were completely skipped when they put the pre-emergents back in the spring. No property could look this bad if it was treated properly. Twenty-five sixty-five Little Pine Court. Thank you.
And Torellio, Spring Hill Drive. Thank you guys, I feel sorry for you. I have no problems, only kidding. First of all, I worked at the golf course in Colonial. Number one, with our area right here, we have sand for soil. When I lived up north, you have four or five inches of dirt. When you have sand, you're a battle. I have a sample weeds I showed here a couple of years ago. We had tons of them. Mother Nature, look at a hot summer, that's why we're getting this. Chemicals have not been clear, everything. We have a heat wave that destroys our grass and everything. For the golfers here, what's the most important thing when you're playing golf? Cost, money for fertilizer. You get what you pay for. I understand, I have problems with my lawn too. But it'll be corrected in time. Thank you, gentlemen.
Marie Catlin, twenty-eight hundred Danbury Lane. And my complaint is that someone in the the workers can't just spray the weeds that grow in between the Belgium blocks and the drive, and the street. But instead of just aiming it at that area, they raised it and it killed, as someone else spoke before. I've had a, I have pictures of, of the whole block. The grass is dead and it's been that way all summer and it doesn't look like it's coming back. And uh, that, that's my complaint, it's not that, and the application, it's just the way it was done. I have pictures by the-
He probably turned it down a lot.
Tom?
Tom?
Tom, the volume is down too low. Turn, turn the volume up, please.
Which one?
Two, number two.
Okay, so in those areas that uh, like the examples just explained, we're gonna definitely be addressing that with seed and fertilizer because a couple lawns got hit pretty hard as well, where it looked like it was maybe a double application. If you are in that scenario, you should let the office know to let us know. We have about seven or eight of them currently. But we're gonna be aerating or slicing those probably in like the second week of September. So yeah, the cur lines, the other person that spoke, it'll be addressed probably second week of September. Yes, sir?
Carl Greco, twenty-six forty-seven Meadow Lake Drive. Um, I just want to follow up on a, on a point that the other gentleman just made about sand. I don't have any problems with uh, you know, clumping or the lawn being torn up because of fast turns. But I did have some trees taken out about five years ago and then it looked like, well, you know, I, I don't have a lot of, I need some more topsoil. So I put in like a couple of big loads, dump truck full loads here. And guess what, I have sand again. I know we've got the sand ants, right? And they're all over along the sides of the driveway and a bunch of places. So I, I had some, I tried to I'm not real good at this stuff, but I tried to uh, do a mini rake there and put some seed down in September, water it. It didn't seem to do much at all, so is your program gonna help? Because I think this, this, the fact that we have a high level of sand, because I understand this was a sand pit at one point. Is that gonna do anything? Is that gonna work? Because like I said, I'm sort of getting back to where I was.
Thirty months of charm. Um, we don't know. Because as you said, unless you're taking out, and I know, I know a couple of homeowners who took out six inches of the top dirt and then put six inches of dirt and then put sod. Their lawns are pristine. So all we can do is do the testing, like your doctor would do. See what's going on and prescribe a possible solution. Now we have to do it. You know, you can't just do the test and not do it on the recommendation, because then don't complain if they, if we didn't put the money into the program that they said we need to do to make it better. That's on the board. Right? So to answer your question, I hope it'll work, you know? But we need to try to do something different because what we're doing now is not good enough.
Just follow up on that quick. If a lot of people, I don't know what the numbers, feel this, that they have the same issue with the excessive amount of sand. I don't like the idea of spending a lot of money to put down sod. But i- if it's the only thing that's gonna work, like I think one time we had, we contracted with, I don't know, it was kind of love or somebody to take down a whole bunch of trees on Good Mind that were all diseased and was absolutely abysmal. And it finally looks better. absolutely abysmal, and it finally looks better now because they're all gone. Maybe a thing is to get a contractor who says, "Well, if you've got X number of people who wanna do like sod replacement, we can give you your account, your community a break on it," or something like that.
That's a very good point, and if each individual homeowner wanted to invest more in their lawn, of course you can. But for the most part, I think we'd all agree, the majority of people are not looking to put thousands of dollars into their lawn. Now, again, I mentioned a couple of people I know that have done that, and they got great results. And, you know, you hope that lasts, and hopefully it will. But we definitely need to beef up the treatments for even the sod that went down, because if you don't feed the sod, you're gonna be back to square one again, right? So the board is gonna have to find a way to come up with money and increase the program to give the lawns a chance.
Okay.
Come on up, we got another, you wanna show 'em? Come, bring it over, show 'em, let's, let me see. What is this? Oh, that's that creeping one, what is it? What is it? Scirch.
Brayton Catlin, 2800 Danbury Lane. And as my sample of the weeds, I just throw it in, they primarily are growing along the edges of sidewalks, driveways, curbing. They're not growing in the middle, center part of the lawn. So I don't know if it's a matter of how it's sprayed, but that's up to your people. So that's the sample, and I see quite a lot of along the edges of our yards. Driveways, sidewalks, curbs. Now, just to comment on what Marie was saying about the curbing, and it looks like the weed killer that's used along the curb for the street, between the street and the curb, was sprayed up onto the lawn.
Yes.
Just to clarify that, and up to about a foot of the lawn is dead, going from about where we live to the corner of Danbury, and then going up to Rock Hill. But if you go the other direction on Lennox Street, you'll see also more examples. And we can see examples up the street from Danbury, from where we live at the corner. And there may be other sections in the community too, but that's unknown. So that's a severe problem, because it doesn't look very good. And just to mention one other thing that happened about a year, year and a half ago, we had a couple of sections of dead grass, very regularly, not the way nature seems to work, but square yards of dead grass. I submitted a complaint, a concern sheet. Somebody came around to look at it and agreed that it was meticulous problem. Apparently, the person that was operating the machine that would put down the weed killer came to the corner, instead of turning it off, the machine off, turned, and they came back up. So they got a double concentration of the weed killer at that corner. Somebody came over and took a look at it, and said, somebody from meticulous would come around and fix the problem, a couple of problems like that. Nobody ever came around, that was disappointing. Thank you.
So obviously, you know, the follow-up has to be there, right? Because it's one thing to identify, but if you're not doing anything, but, you know, so that's something that has to be sure of. So again, I'm gonna say this, we ask that people put in concern sheets, so we can better track it, not for what's happened in the past. If you have a concern right now, like we say at every board meeting, you need to fill out a concern sheet, and then that piece of paper will get logged and handed over to meticulous. I'm not saying that's gonna fix everything and nothing's gonna fall through the cracks, not saying that. But this process gives us the best opportunity to try to deal with the concerns.
Nancy Yeller, 2303 Low Report. So, this is coming with a baby, this is a little tree, and, Is that better?
Yeah.
So anyways, so my concern is, size all the, whatever you all said. So our house is, I don't know what distance toward English House, but when I grew up as a child, I used to cut the grass on a riding mower, you know, and I swear to God, I never went as fast as these guys. But because our houses are so close, they always go back and forth. So I guess there's never any option to like kind of,
Sodding.
Sodding, and so we have these troughs, if it's raining, and they cut, and again, you know, they can't control the rain, we have these like troughs, and so I guess it just looks like they always cut the exact same spaces the same way, but there's troughs, and, you know, but it's grass, so, you know.
It's better than dirt.
It's better, and the weeds too. The weeds are like, they're enormous, especially in the front, they're like, I've never seen weeds like this, they're like radioactive or something. And anyway, and I also have those, I think it's those other weeds you showed, it's like green with like a red stamp, they're everywhere, you know. It's like, you know, it's a red, red stamp, and then the green, but that's all.
Okay. Even though I know you Dave, so leave an address, please.
David Letchner, 2968 Field Crest Lane. I understand that the amount of money that we pay per household for our landscaping is minimal, but it's a performance issue. There's no reason for these cutters to fly through your yard and tear up your yard when they're making those zero radius turns. The clippings, when they come along and they cut your edging, and all that cutting's going to your mulch that I just redid, and I've had four concern sheets on this, and all you do is they come and rake it off. Well, eventually, you know, I'm not gonna have any more mulch. It's, so it is performance, and the foreman on site would come and take a look, and he'd say, "I talk to these people, they don't listen." And they don't listen. I pulled him aside a couple times, and they don't speak English, they don't even look at you when you're talking to them. So it's, if they could just slow down and do the job right. You know, because we're victims here. I mean, because of the low cost, we can't get better. But there's no reason why someone can't do the job the right way. And we're all the victims of getting our yards torn up and them not doing the right job. The other thing is, when they bag, when I used to cut my grass, I would bag, and I'd have to empty my bag. I watched these guys go down a whole block and not once dump a bag. So what are they picking up, what are they cutting? Back in the day, when you first started, last year, we had these kind of same conversations in the annex before, and we figured, well, this is a learning curve, because it's a new company. And we gave you that opportunity, we voiced our opinion, and that was the same things last year that we're addressing today. So nothing's changed, and, you know, what are we gonna do going forward? We're gonna spend X amount of money to increase our fertilization, get better property, but what are you gonna do to correct the execution of this? But the bagging part too, you know, I mean, what is going on? When you first started, you would be bagging, and we'd be dumping in certain places, and then you'd pick it up. I haven't seen one place where you deposit this to pick it up.
That's right.
So, is it that you're not really bagging it, making it look like it's a bagging operation, or what? But, you know, these are, the main thing for me is the edging. I wish these guys, you know, there's,
You mean the weed whacker?
Rotation of the cutter?
You mean the weed whacker?
Weed whacking, yes, yes. And they don't care, it's my fluid, which I understand, you know, time is money, and we get what we pay for. To cut, you know, cut, just weed whack and blow them up, that's it. But I'm tired of this with my cutting, those cutties of the weed whackers in my mulch, and I'm not gonna stand for it anymore. I'm ready to have a confrontation with this guy that keeps cutting it the wrong way. So you better,
You mean weed whacking?
That's the edging, whatever you wanna call it, the edging,
Weed whacking? Well, we need to understand what you're saying, so you're talking about the weed whacking.
Okay, so when they edge or weed whack the side of your house, so you know that that machine, that weed whacker is rotating a certain way that it's gonna go back into the lawn.
Not the flower.
But if you turn the other way, it's gonna go into your mulch. So it's a performance issue again, which this guy's been told numerous times, and I talked to the foreman, he says, "I tell them all the time, they don't listen." I said, "What do you do?" You know, and I'm tired of it, and I've had it.
I hear ya, I mean, who wants to spend money on mulch making a yard nice and hard to deal with?
Exactly, and this rotation, the tearing up the yard. And I see it on the verms too. They'll continually go along a verme and just keep running that, and running that, and running it, and all you have is dirt now. And it's, you know, instead of, you know, going up this way, they're going in that way. So it's all over our property. This is, I've been here almost nine years, and this is the worst I've ever seen Lakewood in landscaping ever. So, and it needs to be fixed. So even if it's, you know, going forward to pay more for better, I think it's a performance. But the performance part, there's no reason for that, you're right, so, thank you.
Hi, Bella Gorilla, 2333 East Dashville Court. So, last year, they made the turn in front of my house, dug it up, and did a beautiful job, came and seeded it, lost half the year, but it was seeded. Grass came up really nice in September. So I made sure, I called, I said, "You know, I don't want the turn right in front of my house there." That's where the turn was. I put it in the driveway, just turn there. Every Monday, and I've tried to guess that usually we get it cut on a Monday, I went out, every single Monday, watched when the guy came, I'd go, "No turn?" And sure enough, well, I figured, I went through every, there must have been seven different vessels that were cutting, and I finally went, I just went and looked yesterday, when I did it Monday, and sure enough, he dug it up. Now, in addition to that, we've got the burn issue. I don't wanna go through every, all of it, because we all agree that those are problems. But I agree, I agree with you, if we need to do, and that's up to the board, whether you wanna do that, and we need added whatever, but I think, I'm no expert, that we've got burnout. And I think that has to be from it not being applied evenly. Because I'm burned in one area, not burned in the other area. Figure that out, I don't, I don't know.
Where is your address?
2333 East Dashville Court. One other thing, and I don't know whether it's right or wrong, but I remember there was a page that was issued when a former, that do not water your ground, and they had a big page, a big page written, "Do not water your," you could tell me if this is right or wrong, "Do not water your ground the day of your cutting." Of course, we have to always be, and we've gotten more steady that usually Mondays we get cut. Because rain, now, when it rained that time, I went out and I said, "What are you doing? It's raining." They go, "Well," I said, "You gotta stop this, it's raining, you can't cut now." And sure enough, they sort of stopped it, and then they didn't cut it. Anyway, it's over and over and over. So I would like to have you come out and show you that, once again, all your beautiful grass that you did plant is gone because of the turn. And again, it's the perfect, I have to agree, use the same word. Even though we made my pay that much, but what we pay for should be done right. Now, if we pay for cutting, it should be done right. If we pay for whatever we're paying for, now if we need more money, that's another story, that's another issue. Thank you.
Let's do one more. You're right. Tom Barnes, 2663 Silver Hill Lane.
I can do that, you're right. Tom Barnes, 2663 Silver Hill Lane. And one thing I wanna say, it's a tough thing with grass. And I'm not, it's, I really don't like it, and, but I'm a master gardener over, and people here, they have the weeds and everything, they wanna find out what it's, go down to the accident, and they'll tell you what you got, and they'll tell you what you can do. It's a tough year. This year, I've never seen the weather, the burning of everything, and that's what happens, you know? I see people, they, in the weather, and they're cutting, and that's not the way to do it. And, you know, and that's where you get your clumping and everything like that. But it's a tough thing, and it's gonna be, probably a better thing. But I, that's what I wanna say, right?
All right, can we get this one, just one more?
Thank you, Mike. Janet Corson, 2551 Danbury Lane, a year, fourteen years. And originally from Bano, which the soil was very different up there. But I just wanna say, and listening to everybody, I have the same complaints, but we're dealing with a changing environment, and also in the years that I've been here, the lawns were very grassy, but now we have soil erosion, and the sand is showing, and things are not growing. So the problem is twofold. Question, how are we going to deal with this changing environment? And I'm certainly glad that you came to speak today, you know, and said about soil testing and other things happening in the environment. We can see that the sun is getting stronger, not gonna get into the whole climate change thing, but, no, sorry. But I also think the other problem is maintenance, which you've heard all the complaints already today. So, these are the things we have to work on. So the soil, I'm glad you're looking at the soil. I have a question too, about, what about something like clover and nitrogen in the soil?
Well, specifically, clover is a legume, and it does create its own nitrogen. So, you know, if you have clover, chances are that your fertility is probably pretty good. I haven't seen too much clover in your facility earlier on here, it's so sandy, you know, so. But, I mean, you're talking about growing clover, like micro clovers?
Well, in addition to grass seed, regular, what did you recommend to us for this year?
Dave, you're really gonna limit what kind of applications you can do then, because a lot of these,
We're over a major aquifier, you know, so I don't believe in a lot of these things. And, you know, in fact, I went out in June in the rain, and I'm saying to one of your men, you know, "What are you doing?" And he said, "Oh, I'm cutting the grass." I said, "It's raining," you know, and then he said, "And then we're putting down the fertilizer." And I remember from, and this could be wrong, but I remember from the last time, we're putting down fertilizer, and this was what's turf masters, "Do not water." So, I don't know what's right or wrong, because even though I'm an advocate,
Application that's being made, there's different things that need to be followed per the label, which is the law. But as far as your micro clover goes, if you wanna get that, introduce that to your community, that's a whole separate topic that we'd have to talk about, because then you'd have to be all in on a pure natural program, and your weed applications would be so limited, I think you would have more complaints about weeds than you do today.
I do, I'm ready.
Well, that's the things that we're talking about that need to be addressed, yeah.
So we have to be ready to change. You know, obviously, things were beautiful when I came in, but I know I'm not gonna have a golf course lawn, because everything's different now.
That's correct.
So, what do we do? So what do we do? That's the question. Those are the two problems and what do we do about it? So, I'm sorry, I forget your name, but, and your son. So you can rectify training your people to do things differently. I didn't realize the mowers are all going at the same speed and whatever. But you can tell them, and, you know, I forgot to mention also, I walk on the trails here and there are clumps of grass, dry grass, all over that. So maybe when they're bagging, maybe the bag is full, it's like they're putting these droppings. Anyway, getting back to solving this problem. What do we do?
So on a go forward, obviously, the recommendations were that we need to do more treatments. So like I mentioned, would we consider doing an additional treatment at the end of this season, which sets up next year? You know, let's just start with a number, $12,000. Now, I don't think, I'm not speaking for the board because you have five board members. But I think if the consensus is that in order to really start heading this off, we need to do something in the fall in addition to what we normally do, and then next year, plan to do additional treatments.
So how would this affect me aerating and seeding? You know, with those fertilizers?
No, you can aerate and seed at the end of the season in the prescribed time. Yes. So in September is normally the first, second, third week. In September, most people would do aeration and seed. Whatever we're talking about, and I'm gonna turn my head this way and make sure I'm right. If you just did an additional fertilization, can we still aerate and seed? Is the question, is that what you're saying now?
Yes.
Okay.
With the postures and with the soil...
Yes. Experts say yes.
Okay. And I also wanted to mention somebody had asked about a soil test. And you could do that. They can have that done at the agricultural center for farmers.
Right.
All right, thank you and thank you for explaining. And maybe, you know, things will change from year to year because everything's changing, I guess. All right, thank you.
All right. Just for you, one more, Joe.
Thank you, Mike. I'm Joe Gomez.
No.
2414 Torington Drive. You're here because we were told that we would save $60,000 by switching from Turf Master to Maticulus. I am here to speak for the people who are on a fixed income. What I'm hearing here is that this costs $12,000, this costs $24,000. So when I look at the big picture, the $60,000 that we saved, looks like it's gonna go away. And I guess, not so much Maticulus, but I'm directing it at the board. What about the people who are on fixed incomes? What do you, how are we gonna handle this?
Do you want a beautiful lawn?
Do I want a beautiful lawn? I want a lawn. It doesn't have to be beautiful, no. I don't. Okay. So then they should pay for it. It shouldn't be, we all pay for it.
So my feeling is, no, not necessarily. My feeling is, I've had lawns in my past. I have a lawn right now that's not exactly what I'm liking. I don't have a problem with meticulous. Whatever I want to do, I do on my own.
So they're doing a perfect job. Is that what you're saying?
I'm not gonna say that they're doing a perfect job.
They're doing a great job. How about a great job?
They're doing a job that would work for, let's say, more than half of the community. And there's gonna be at least half the community that's gonna say, I want better. Now, to answer your question, it's not to meticulous you write, it's to the board.
Right.
The board has to balance, like I said before, keeping in mind that there are people that cannot afford possibly to live here if we continually raise the HOA. And yes, that is the job of the board. You know you are on the board.
I know.
Right? So one of the chief things that the board has to look at is the balance between what we get and what it costs. So somehow, the board has to get together with the finance committee and come up with a solution that hopefully will help as many people as possible, those that want a better lawn and those that can't afford a better lawn. So, you know, there's no immediate answer to this question right now because we have to understand what we're talking about in terms of money. For each $11,000 of expense, it's one HOA dollar per month per house. So if we wanna add, like the numbers you said, we'll just throw out a number, $33,000. If we add $33,000 to the budget, that means everyone will pay $3 more, everyone. $3 more every month for the whole year.
On top of...
On top of whatever increases.
Whatever the other increases.
Well, you know, gas, electric, whatever's going up, you know? So it becomes an issue of, again, the balancing act, to try to help as many people as possible and to try to have the best looking place possible. And it's not easy and I can't have an answer today. But clearly, clearly, we need to do something a little bit more, which means there'll be more money spent. And maybe we have to look for cost savings somewhere else to offset this increase.
Okay.
So, you know, there are other things that possibly could save money that we have to look into.
Well, that's...
That's the underside of the coin.
Yeah, I do know that.
Okay.
I know that very well. Because when I was on the board, it went up $1 and $3 the two years that I was on, just so you know.
Yeah, and Joe, wait a minute.
My question to the team is...
You're talking now.
You've heard a lot of people complain about they do a whole block. And most of these houses are all on 50 by 100 lots. So it's 50, 50, 50, 50. And you're never unloading the carts. What I saw, and I happened to see this because it happened right in front of my house, you don't have a truck or a vacuum, do you?
Well, let me, I don't know if you have a mic. Do you have a mic? Is that on? Is it on? Is the green light on?
Yeah, we do. It's not here in Lake Ridge, right? It's not here in Lake Ridge?
No. Because we're only bagging the fronts. We're not bagging the whole yard. And what they do is they go from...
Yeah, but what I'm trying to say...
Excuse me, I was speaking. You asked me to pass on my answer.
I realize that. But all the people who spoke tried to tell you that they're doing a whole block before they even empty the bag. And when you look at the bag, you can, the bag are part of it. You can see all the grass blowing out as they're coming by.
So you're saying that they're running with full hoppers?
They're running, they're running with the units full.
Okay, so...
That's something you got. And the way they unload is they take the top off, put a grain, a landscape barrel, and they go in there and dig it out. And then climbs up into the truck, reaches down, grabs a barrel. It just seems very inefficient. I mean, I'm sure you're in this to make money, but that seems like a harmful lot of climb. But anyhow, I don't know.
Okay. Well, it's 20 to 1. We're not taking any more questions even though we added on a couple more. I'd like to thank you all for coming. And what, again, what are we trying to accomplish? We have a relationship with the vendor. We could go to another vendor that we don't know that may have a bad track record. I'm sorry. Right? Mary, you're in the way. And, you know, things like that. To go to another unknown with someone who wants to charge you more money, who doesn't have the reputation that you want, or that, would you rather stay with a company that here and is willing to listen and try to help? You know, all these things have to be taken into consideration. I do wanna say one thing on behalf of meticulous.